We'll call the meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Education for Monday, October 11th, to order. Our first item is we have Mr. Joey Hammerick with Flint Hill Baptist Church for our invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Father, we come to you tonight, we just love you, and we praise you for being a God that loves us and protects us. Lord, we thank you for sustaining us through all that you've brought us through. Lord, I thank you for who you are in our lives. Lord, I thank you for your Son, Jesus, who makes all of life possible. Lord, I thank you for this board before me tonight. I thank you for what they represent here in the Cleveland County. I thank you, Lord, for what they do as they lead and they guide and they govern our school system. Lord, I thank you for our teachers. I thank you for our staff. I thank you so much for the children that you've entrusted to us. But, Lord, tonight, my cry is that your name be lifted high. Lord, I pray tonight that the decisions that are made, the words that are spoken, the actions that are taken, that everything will bring honor and glory to you, God, because of who you are and because you are worthy. Lord, take this time and use it to be an offering to you. We love you and we praise you and we thank you tonight, in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Hunt.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have one item of special recognition this evening. This is Principal Appreciation Month. In this October, the Cleveland County Board of Education recognizes the essential role that our principals and assistant principals play in making our school system great. As we celebrate Principal Appreciation Month, the Board wants to acknowledge the excellence that our school-based leaders are cultivating. Principals set the academic tone for their schools, and it is their vision, dedication, and determination that provide the mobilizing force for achieving student success. School principals and assistant principals are often thrust into roles of instructional leader, staff motivator, and community cheerleader. The Board of Education wants to take this opportunity to honor these school and community heroes for their tireless efforts in pursuit of excellence in education, their work to keep our students and staff members healthy and safe, and the dedication they exhibit to our students, schools, and communities. So let's give our principals and assistant principals. So we'll recognize any guests. Do we have any principals or assistant principals with us? I didn't see any. Any teachers assistants or teachers this evening? Any elected officials? How many parents? I think we got a couple. Welcome, everyone. Next is the adoption of the agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Fitch, second by Mr. Hunt. Any questions or discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, if you raise your hand. Motion carries nine zero. So next item is public participation. We do have, I think we have five. Five, that puts us right on our 15 minutes, so we'll proceed with that. Our first speaker is Ms. Marjorie Hooper.
I'd like to read a letter from Keisha Leinberger. She's the Republican National Committee Woman for North Carolina. She sent this letter to all our senators, including the Rhino and the Speaker of the House, and all our congressmen and congresswomen, the North Carolina GOP chairman, and the RNC chairwoman, Rona McDaniel. Dear Representatives, as a representative of North Carolina Republicans, I am very concerned about the U.S. Attorney General Merrick Garland's letter dated October 4th, 2021, asking the FBI and the Criminal Division to intervene as parents and citizens and advocacy groups fight against critical race theory in our government school systems. The Republicans in North Carolina have taken a very firm stance against CRT in the school system and should be allowed to express each concern by way of public disclosure in school board meetings and protest without fear of reprisal. A.G. Garland's letter affects dedicated Republican voters and your constituents across North Carolina who hold enough to stand up, who are bold enough to stand up and speak out and protest our children, protect our children against CRT in our schools. This is not acceptable. I ask that our elected representatives take a public stance protecting the constitutional right of freedom of speech and denouncing A.G. Garland and the Biden administration's overreach. Thank you for your attention. Sincerely, Keisha Leinberger. These are also my exact thoughts also. I have the freedom of speech. I will always speak out. No one's ever going to silence me. And when I say that you work for me, I voted for you, you are there because I helped put you there. Some I don't want to be there, and some I will work to get them removed. But anyway, when someone of our own party calls you that is a fellow, I would expect that you would have the decency to return his phone calls, and I would ask you to kindly do that. From this day forth, return his phone calls when he contacts you. Thank you.
Thank you. Second speaker is Ronnie Grigg.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. This weekend, every major football stadium in America had games, and in some cases, with 60,000 or more people in attendance with 5% or less wearing masks. It's funny how COVID shows up at political rallies or family gatherings but not at ballgames. The virus is real, however, the theatrics are very harmful to the children, and they're suffering. Where do we draw the line on this? Earlier this year, the Board agreed on a no-mask mandate, but because of politics, you caused a special emergency meeting trying to please both sides by mandating masks and allowing exemptions for medical and religion. This was your way to try to please everybody, and as adults, we know that's impossible. This made it harder for those who took the exemptions and sent their children to school without a mask. We've heard from parents in these meetings that some teachers have bullied their children for asking to change the mask every two hours like they were promised, and you know, children with exemptions are being told, "Just go ahead and wear the mask anyway." In some cases, children are being segregated by mask and no-mask. Is this not total hypocrisy to have teachers embarrassing children in front of their peers? Isn't that a form of bullying? I saw a written test by a Kings Mountain teacher giving students scenarios about manufacturing drugs and starting a business that specialized in killing rednecks with minivans. Now, we tell our children that drugs are dangerous and that name-calling is wrong. Is this not hypocrisy again? After speaking with a member of the administration, I was told their hands were tied and only the superintendent could address the teacher. And in this case, it was discussed with the teacher, and the teacher was given the name of the child that reported the exam. Is this how we handle situations like this? This should have been handled in the best interest of the child. Now the child is a target for continued harassment and bullying from the teachers and fellow students. We need to get back to education and treating the children equal. If not, maybe we need to change the entire administration of the school board. It's up to you to live up to your promises of transparency, communication, and integrity. Do you think you've been doing that? Our concerns right now are falling on deaf ears. And as they say in Talladega, "Let's go, Brandon."
Third speaker is Nan Lindhart.
Can you advise the pen down?
Yes, ma'am.
(Inaudible) I can't hear me better because my computer died. So, that was bad, but the handout will work appropriately. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Tal. There you go. There you go. That's a lot. So what I'm addressing tonight is critical race theory. And on that first sheet, those of you that got it, I'm sorry, Greg, you don't have it because Marge, you know, she spoke on it, but I'll get it to you. Yeah, okay. But that first sheet, Marge spoke on it. It was Keisha Leinberger's. So, and that second picture you see is SEL being taught in the schools. I might have to put my glasses on. That's just an example, okay? About my friends, that's the question, that's the students. My best friend's name, my best friend thinks I, something my friends do say, think that worries me, something my friends do say, think that inspires me. About my mom caregiver, my mom's caregiver's name is. Today, I would like to describe my relationship with my mom. That's very personal. That ain't got nothing to do with reading, writing, and arithmetic. I honestly tell you that. Nothing. You know, psychiatric evaluations, that is a legal law. People are out there practicing this stuff. Somebody's going to get sued. Okay? And that second one, you're looking at Tuesday through Thursday. September self-awareness. And zones of regulation. You know, it looks like, looks like this. I think it's like the third page from the back. These are what's being taught in the schools, curriculum. Just go over the, you know, blue, green, yellow, red zone. Red looks like red face, scrunch face. I mean, what's it got to do with reading, writing, and arithmetic? But that's my personal opinion. So, I want you to pick up on your very last piece of paper that looks like this, and it's probably got a circle up there at the top. That is your North Carolina statue on obscenity, literature, and exhibitions. This is what's going to happen when a school system is giving out nasty, sexual, provocative books, videos, whatever. Our Lieutenant Governor Mark Robinson is speaking on that. And thank you Superintendent Stephen Fisher for the nice letter. I tried to access curriculum, standard course of study. I get video unavailable. I get you need to have access, request access.
Ms. Lindhart, I'm sorry, your three minutes of exercise.
I got it. I mean, you know, I know that was quick and fast, but you know, how can people know the curriculum? How?
Our fourth speaker is Dina Spangler.
Good evening. Thank you all for letting me speak tonight. I just really have one question. I know that on Education Weekly, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that news site, they have published recently all the county's information as far as COVID relief funds that are coming into our school systems. Not sure if you're aware of this or not, but Cleveland County Schools is receiving or has received $62,365,293.71. My question is, how is this money being spent? They're only requiring that you spend 20% on educational setbacks. You can use the other 80% for whatever you want to. Who's making those decisions? Are you guys overseeing that? And may I make a suggestion that we use 80% of that for educational setbacks and 20% for whatever else the school system needs? Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker is Marshall Allen.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. You guys have had a tough time over the last few months. I'm just kind of getting to know all y'all and kind of screwing my head on and becoming aware of what's going on. I don't envy you in this day and age. It's an unprecedented time in our country with the amount of turmoil and things going on. The misinformation, I know you guys, I really do feel like all of you want what's best for our children. I think you're all here for a reason, and I do appreciate that. That being said, I didn't get up and speak last time because I didn't know what we were going to talk about. I didn't realize mask mandates were going to be a thing that we talk about every month. I heard a lot of medical misinformation last time I was here, just a lot of things that didn't make sense. The stats are out there on everything if we choose to look at them. I felt like I was watching Channel 9, Channel 3 News, CNN, Fox News, whatever it may be, with just the lack of knowledge on things that are going on statistically, what research is out there. We have stuff from the CDC, we have stuff from NIH. Information's abundant. I'm by no means an educated man. I'm a working man, always have been, blue collar. But that doesn't dictate intelligence by any measure. I don't know if you guys are aware of the next push. The next push we're encountering is vaccine mandates. Pfizer, as of after Halloween, will be, they're asking right now for CDC approval for kids aged 5 to 12. You guys have probably seen Gavin Newsom in California is already asking for a mask mandate, or not a mask mandate, I'm sorry, a vaccine mandate for kids K-12. That's just, that's just beyond disbelief to me that we would ask parents to not have a say on what happens to their kids. We're the parents of the kids. We dictate what happens to our kids, not the state. I feel like I'm waking up in Communist China. If we had all been in a coma, I know I got a minute left, we'd all been in a coma, woke up from three years from this nap, and came to and saw everyone wearing a mask, and said, "Hey, we're going to mandate vaccines to go to school for our kids." It's just insane. But one thing I want to touch on real quick before I run out of time is natural immunity. If you go to the NIH website, it says right here, "The immune systems of more than 95% of people recovered from COVID-19 had durable memories of the virus of the eight months after injection. The results provided hope that people," it says, "The results provide hope that people receiving the SARS-CoV-2 vaccine will develop similar lasting immune memories after vaccination." The data goes on, there's sheets and sheets of it, and I don't have time to read it to you guys, nor do you want to hear me tell you about it, but my point being, guys, please stick up for us when the time comes, when this comes down the pipe, because we're on the edge of it. What happens in California, the country follows suit. I just ask that you guys do the research, check for yourselves. I mean, you guys are smart people. Please just check for yourselves. I don't want to see that coming down the way because that's not going to be good for anybody. Thank you, guys.
Next, we have approval of recent business meeting minutes. The first is the closed session transfer hearing from September 13th. What's the pleasure of the board?
Need to approve.
Motion by Mr. Humphries.
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. And that motion passes nine zero. Second is approval of the minutes of the September 13th business session and the general account of the closed session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Need to approve.
Motion by Mr. Glover.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hunt. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. And that passes nine zero. Last is the closed session minutes of September 13th. Those minutes do remain sealed until a later date. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Blanton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glover. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. And that motion passes nine zero. All right, committee reports. First is Finance and Personnel, Mr. Shores.
Mr. Chairman. Finance Personnel Committee met on Friday, September 24th at 10:30. The meeting was called to order. Dan Karpinski began the meeting with an update on the state budget. As of the meeting, there was no substantial progress in state budget for LEAs. The district is hearing mixed messages on when and if the state will finalize a 2021, 2022 budget. District staff will work to keep everyone informed on any budget process out of Raleigh. Dr. Fisher discussed the ongoing work that the district is doing with classified salary scales. The district is trying to work within the parameters of opposed state budgets. Once the state budget is released, then the district will be prepared to recommend changes to the local salary scale. Mr. Lamanna provided an overview of upcoming open enrollment for supplemental benefit programs for employees. Mr. Lamanna shared an overview of the changes and highlights of the benefits offered to the employees. It was noted all employees should attend the mandatory benefits meeting at their work locations so they will be aware of these changes and updates as they are provided in those in-person meetings. Dr. Fisher provided a short ESRA update and Head Start update. Ms. Wapler informed the committee that the district had approved for secondary schools to hire permanent substitutes to assist staffs due to absences due to quarantines. There was no new business. The meeting was adjourned. The next Finance Personnel Committee will be October 29th at 10:30.
Thank you. Next, we have our personnel report. And that does not come from committee, so I need a motion from the board to approve.
Need to approve.
I heard Mr. Humphries first, second by Mr. Hunt. That work for you? Any questions on the personnel report? All right, those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. Any opposed?
No.
That carries eight to one. Next, we have educational programs. Mr. Humphries.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the Educational Program Committee met on September 24th at 10:30. Dr. Ware shared the parent-university schedule for the 21-22 school year. She also shared with the committee that we would, that we would...
Hold on just a second.
You can't do all that personnel report together because she had to excuse herself.
All right. Ms. Attorney, since we've already taken the vote, do we re, do we need to re-vote or just record it as Ms. Green's vote as a recusal?
I mean, the action has already taken place, so if it can stand, we can do that.
So that would be seven to one with one recusal. Okay, all right. Thank you. Mr. Humphries.
All right. So Dr. Ware shared the parent-university schedule for the 21-22 school year. She also shared with the committee that we would also be adding a focus on literacy, literacy to parent-university. Finally, she asked that the committee members help publicize the parent-university sessions. Ms. Tropsey-McClune shared a presentation from the Math Academy Summer 2021. She explained how Math Academy partnered with Cleveland County Schools in June as a result of summer school legislation, and that worked out very well. We had a discussion about closing the gap. The committee engaged in a robust conversation about closing the gap, student academic achievement, and engaging the community. As a part of the discussion, several members of the core group and Close the Gap Committee were present, and those included Dr. How, Reverend Howes, and Mr. Hooker, Larry Corey and Tropsey. Larry Corey will work with the core group and Dr. Fisher in order to schedule a time to meet and discuss the district's current test data and strategies to address the achievement gap, and we will be meeting with him further in the soon, very soon. And the next meeting is scheduled for October 29th at 10:30 a.m.
Thank you. Next is Operations Committee. Mr. Blanton.
Yes. The Operations Committee met Friday, September 24th at 9:00. The meeting was called to order. McMillan and Fladham Smith, MPS, was scheduled to update the committee on the district's and faculty's assessments, but due to some scheduling issues, were unable to attend the meeting. Dr. Fisher and Ms. Wapler provided a brief update on their progress. Dr. Fisher and Ms. Wapler believe there will be some preliminary data and recommendations coming in October committee meeting. Ms. Wapler and Mr. Childers provided an operations update. The update included the capital project report and the CTMA update on the district HVAC projects. CMTA is working on finalizing the proposal of the projects. These projects are ranked in order of the need, long-term benefits to the district and funding sources. Some of the projects qualify to be, being under the ESSER funding. The committee reaffirmed the decision to move forward with the potential sale of the house and property at Grover Elementary School and the central school property. A survey being conducted at the house in Grover. A formal motion to declare these properties a surplus will come tonight, board meeting. Information about the surplus property will be included on the district's website. In regards to the central school property, the district will include a 12-month window of time to allow the district to relocate the planned operations division. I'll have something to say about that in a few minutes. Mr. Place presented a list of surplus vehicles to the committee. The committee recommended that these vehicles be declared as surplus vehicles and sold. This will be included on the October board meeting agenda. With no further business, the meeting was adjourned, and the next operations meeting is scheduled for October 29th at 9:00.
All right. Thank you.
Can we have that discussion?
Well, when we get down to the surplus property, we can do that. Next, we have Mr. James Curry with CMTA here to go over the proposals for our heating and air systems. Mr. Curry?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. James Curry, mechanical engineer with CMTA, a full-service engineering firm out of Charlotte, North Carolina. I want to give you a quick summary of our efforts to date on the assessments of the four high schools.
Can you pull the microphone just a little closer?
I can. I'll lean in. How's that? Go into my own ears. I just want to provide a short summary of the efforts to date with the assessments as well as the proposals set forth and how to proceed in the next phase of work for this. Over the last several months, my company as well as several consultants have been over the high schools and done evaluations. The four high schools range in age from 1964, '65 to the latest additions in the late 2000s, late aughts. The assessment that we have put together includes several items related to the envelope itself. The envelopes are, the envelope being the walls, the roof, the glass, and all of the things contained therein. The envelope basically on the schools has some air leakage, infiltration. We did an assessment with an envelope consultant in that and determined that there are areas that need to be addressed. We also went through each of the building's mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems. In that, in doing so, the mechanical systems... In that, in doing so, the mechanical systems, HVAC systems in the building are generally speaking far beyond their statistical life, and there are several that are at the point of failure essentially. This is impacting the, in our opinion, this is impacting, you know, the indoor air quality in the facilities, as well as the controllability through the, the automatic systems that are installed in the building. It's also impacting your energy use of the facilities. Next in that is we prepared the report for each of the schools. And in that, we presented priorities, which we felt how to proceed with each of the buildings. Essentially, it went Burns, Crest, Kings Mountain High School, Shelby High School, in that order. The next was to prioritize how the money would be spent. We created budgets for each of those schools, really focusing in on the mechanical, the ventilation, air quality control, and improving the facility to current Department of Public Instruction code requirements at this point. And in doing so, we will need to address certain electrical components of each building and also plumbing components to support any replacements. So what is put forward in the proposal essentially is a plan for six packages. So that will be six essentially simultaneous packages of work. So those are, each package is a set of documents that would go out for public bid, and each of those would contain in it a scope of work to address the items identified in the report. What is not listed there is essentially Package Four, Five, and Six have two parts. The schools must remain in operation, which presents challenges, and will extend the construction of each of those. So what we are going to need to do right up front is identify how to make temporary facilities for each of the schools and the areas of work. We will then put a package out to prepare the infrastructure for trailers or off, essentially out of the building, trailers for educational purposes. That will be home to, as each phase of work inside the building goes forward, that will be home to the students who are displaced, short term, until their area has been renovated. The goal is of the completion of the projects, which we estimate, including design, to take roughly thirty months. We must have any of the funds that have been made available through ESER spent and accounted for by September of twenty twenty-three?
Four.
Four, all right, twenty twenty-four. I'm doing math in my head. There we go. And in order to do that, you know, we will have to expedite the design and get those out on the street. So that's a two-year period of construction roughly for the schools. It will be intensive, and we will be doing everything we can, you know, to manage it for the district. So what's put forward in here is preparation of those bid documents, as well as management of the construction process, and doing everything that we can to alleviate any burden on the district and their operations staff, because each project, it is our experience, takes some significant work to manage all the way through construction. And then getting final sign-off and permitting approval, as well as Department of Insurance and Department of Public Instruction, so each of those has to go through and get approval for that. So that being said, anything further?
Any questions from Mr. Curry?
Yes. Okay. Yes, sir.
On that Crest and Burns, is that plumbing and that heating and air, is that, is that at the top of the list, that HVAC and that, that plumbing and all them leaks that we got at them two schools? Is that at the top of the list?
We have to be careful how we spend this money. And so we want to make sure that every penny that we spend is associated or is properly allocated and can be accounted for, so nobody comes back and asks us questions. There is a significant amount of work in plumbing that is needed to be repaired, to improve upon the indoor air, and also just the environmental quality, and to support the HVAC system. So I will say, yes, it is included to a point. So there are some things that we just cannot assign purely to that ESER funding, but we are exploring what the extent of that work is, and will present that separately for consideration as we go.
Well, I think we need to address that right off the top. So if we have to go elsewhere, we go, if we don't get that heating and air and that, that plumbing situation, that's what's causing their mold.
Okay.
And the majority of it. You just can't keep leaking on that ceiling tile and it not cause a problem.
You're right.
We have got to address that. So if there ain't enough, if there not enough money there, if there not enough money there, then we better start hunting some more then, because them two, them two jobs. Crest High School sat over yonder for, from the time that school started till just, just a couple of weeks ago with no air, and we got rooms shut down in both places. Our school numbers is shut down, so we should be doing some figuring to make sure on these, we might not need as many mobile units if we had the rooms fixed good enough that where somebody could have a class in it because of all the mold and stuff.
Top of the list.
That might be, fill up for a, a mobile unit.
Understood.
Well, just, just to clarify for folks listening and to summarize this, CMTA has done a facility study of our four high schools, mainly focusing on heating and air. And anything that's kind of wrapped around that, there's, obviously, there's wires that go to heating and air, there's plumbing that goes to heating and air. They've also done the building envelope assessment, which included windows, building joints, things of that sort. So the six packages that have been identified as the tot needs, first is sealing of the building envelope. Basically, using spray foam to seal where the walls meet the roof, closing up unused vents, things of that sort. That's something that we can, we get a lot of bang for the buck. Nobody leaves their front door open at home when they're got the heating and air going. We, we've basically got a garage door open in all of our schools. So we're going to seal that up, and that's something that we can get to quickly. The second package is select glazing at all four schools. It won't be replacing every window in the school, but it'll be replacing the worst windows. And then Packages Three, Four, Five, and Six are for Burns, Crest, Shelby, and Kings Mountain High Schools, and that will be a full-on replacement of all the heating and air systems. Some of the ones at Shelby have been replaced recently. Those will remain in use. Shelby will probably be the most mixed of any of the high schools when we finish.
Correct.
But that's what those four packages, excuse me, the four packages on the high schools. So to get started, we need to approve, Mr. Curry and CMTA, starting the design work, and the total design fees for all six packages is two million, one hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. That's what's being brought before the board tonight. The estimated total project cost of all six packages, which this is what we call below the line, tax title and tag, which is design fees, contingencies, what else am I forgetting?
Moving costs.
Moving costs.
Anything of that nature.
Turnkey.
There you go.
The estimated value is just north of thirty-four million dollars. So the question's been asked about where ESER funding will be going, a big chunk is going to air quality in our four high schools. So...
Is that going to cover that plumbing?
Well, again, it's plumbing and electrical that's related to heating and air. Are we going to be replacing toilets and water heaters?
I'm talking about that plumbing for that heating and air, making it a four instead of a two.
Uh huh. Yes.
Okay.
Any further questions for Mr. Curry? If not, I'll let him sit down. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The Operations Committee did discuss this project and gave a favorable report, but the size and complexity and cost and all this, I think it would be appropriate to, to have a motion from the floor.
Chairman, I'll leave to approve.
What are we approving, the six packages and the, six packages at two-point-one million dollars?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Any further questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. And that passes nine zero. All right. And Mr. Curry, if you need to go, feel free, or you're welcome to stay and enjoy the fun. Okay. Next, action item for operations was the surplus property. And just to summarize on that, there are two properties. We have a, there's a residential property behind Grover School that has been surveyed. I think it's somewhere around seven acres total.
Seven point eighty-eight.
And so that's one of the properties, and then the central school at one oh five East Ridge Street. And both of these properties have to be offered to the county commissioners to see if they want them first. Once we get official recognition from them that they do not want the properties, then we'll move forward with sale, if the board approves. And as was mentioned in the operations report, with central school, we'll ask for a twelve month transition period to get our maintenance folks moved out. Maintenance occupies the bottom floor, and the Partnership for Children has the top two floors.
How long you going to give, think?
Well, they'd have to be out in that twelve months.
Well, I don't remember us talking about the twelve months. Y'all say we do. I, I must not have too good of a memory, but it wouldn't take me twelve months to go over and take a truck, pack that store up, move them over yonder to plant operations at Shelby. I, I just, I just can't see, if we got somebody wanting to buy the place, that, that we take twelve months, you know, to, to move out, because that might cut, cut the price of what somebody wants to give for it. Then it might raise the price. Can't never tell. But it shouldn't take our micro, no twelve months to move out. Now, I understand on that other group, they gonna have to find a place too unless somebody buys it and wants to keep leasing to them. I don't know if that's ever been brought to somebody's mind, and nobody might not want to lease to them.
Dr. Fisher, would you or Ms. Wampner like to add anything on how you arrived at twelve
It's seven point eight-five-five on the acreage on the land. On the survey, right there's the survey.
I think, Mr. Blanton and members of the board, the idea was to make sure that we had ample time to plan what we want to do with maintenance. We would work if somebody made an offer on that and if the board accepted. We're still really in the first quarter of, of any of this process to make sure that, that we had ample time to relocate plant operations, decide what we want to do with that to make any adjustments. I, I could foresee a scenario where somebody made an offer and the board approved that and everything went through, that we would work with that, because there's part of that facility that we're not using. And so there may be some time where we could work through that process. So I think it's just important that whoever begins in that process and makes an offer, if someone does make an offer in that, that they understand that we do have operations there. We've got a lot of stuff over there, and we'll need ample time to get that out. It's just not operations. We've used that gym for some storage. There's lots of things to consider as we, as we look into that. You know, it would give the Partnership for Children as well, and I have been in communication with their director just to keep her in the loop of, of what the board is discussing. Again, we, you know, this isn't really early in the game in terms of, you know, a potential sale of that property, but we have well of options and keep those options open.
This does come as a recommendation from committee, so it doesn't need a second. Any further questions or discussion? If, if there's no objection, we'll take both properties together. Any objection to, okay? Those in favor of declaring the Grover, the house behind Grover and the old central school a surplus property, if you'd raise your hand. And that motion carries nine zero. One more under operations. We have a list of surplus vehicles, and that comes from committee as a recommendation for approval.
I'll make a motion we approve it.
That one's already recommended out of committee. Any questions or discussion? I think there's a green moped on there if anybody's interested.
Twenty twenty moped.
Yeah, it's a, it's a new moped, too.
I was just wondering if some of our staff could use that for business.
I don't know. Any, any questions on the surplus property? Surplus vehicles, excuse me. All right, those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. And that motion carries nine zero. All right, we're done with operations finally. Policy Committee, Mr. Humphers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Policy Committee met on Tuesday, September the twenty-first at noon. Dr. Fisher went through policies that are currently in the old manual and need to be moved to the new manual. For each policy, Dr. Fisher highlighted any updates, and these updates were approved by the committee. Dr. Fisher highlighted Policy thirty-two thirty slash seven three three zero, copyright compliance. Recommendation from the administrative staff is to delete Regulation thirty-three forty dash R, duplication of copyright materials from the old manual, and replace it with additional information in Policy thirty-two thirty slash seven three three zero on fair use. This was approved by the committee. Dr. Fisher also presented several policy updates that come recommended by the North Carolina School Board Association due to legal updates. These policies are already in the new manual. Dr. Fisher highlighted the updates in each policy, which were approved by the committee. The committee discussed Policy forty-one fifty and procedures related to due to transfer approvals by the board and appeal process. The committee directed Dr. Fisher to work with district staff and Mrs. Sink to adjust the current policy and bring edits back to the committee. And the next Policy Committee is scheduled for October the nineteenth at noon.
Thank you. We have a list of policies for approval this evening. It is coming from committee as a recommendation for approval. And just to read these into the record, we have Policy sixty-one twenty-five, R one, R two, and R three, thirty-three twenty dash R, seventy-two forty-one dash R, eighty-one zero five, and forty-three ten is the code of student conduct, and that's for elementary, middle, and high school. And the last one is twenty-four ten. As I understand, these policies are either being moved from the old policy manual to the new manual. There may be a minor correction for, to keep up with state law. The last one had the most changes for policy development. If anybody goes to a Baptist church, you got a committee on committees, well, we got a policy on policies. So that's, that's what that one's doing. Any questions or discussion from the board on these policies for approval? Yes, sir, Mr. Blanton?
At forty-three ten, we just need to make sure that we're following, following, following that policy, that, you know, if a child suspended it one time, two times, if you, you flat-read forty-three ten, especially Section twenty-three, that'll tell you that we need to make sure that our schools is following that for our protection, their protection, and all protection. Forty-three ten, we need to make sure that we're following it, about what it says to do. You know, I hate to do anything to a child or anybody, but when it needs to be done, it needs to be done and needs to be followed to the, to the limit on forty-three ten.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the policies as presented, if you'd raise your hand. That carries nine zero. There's a list of policies before us for first read. And this is Policy seventeen ten, forty twenty, seventy-two thirty, thirty-one twenty R, thirty-two ten E, thirty-two twenty-six, and forty-two oh five E, thirty-two thirty, seventy-three thirty, thirty-four sixty, forty forty, forty-one twenty-five, forty-two forty, forty-three thirty-five, forty-seven hundred dash R, sixty-three twenty, seventy-seven twenty, and eighty-three forty-one. And just for the public's information, the policies that are listed for first read are on board docs. You can access those there. Any revisions are marked in red or yellow. If there are no revisions, then it's probably just being moved from the old manual to the new manual. So you'll be able to find those and see the changes, should you want to comment. Next, we have the Safety...
And all of us board members really need to read those, too. Make sure all...
Safety Committee, Mr. Fitz. No, that's first read.
The Safety Committee met on September twenty-ninth at twelve o'clock. The meeting was called to order. Mr. Porter presented information about an upcoming school resource officer training to be hosted by the...
Thanks.
Are you on?
The training will be held on October 25th, which is a day students are not in school. The training will consist of items such as school justice partnerships, updates, EC updates, teen court, and suicide prevention. All SROs have been invited and encouraged to attend. The committee discussed some traffic concerns at Crest Middle School. The concerns seemed to be more intense than the morning on Beaver Dam Church Road. The committee looked at the school map and discussed potential solutions. Mr. Pless will observe the traffic at the school for several mornings and the district will work with the school on several potential solutions. Dr. Fisher updated the committee on a new resource for the North Carolina Department of Instruction on Internet safety for students. The resource will be used by district staff to educate students on the appropriate uses of the Internet. The new resource fits nicely with the current common sense curriculum used by CCS. Dr. Fisher also spoke about some bus stop concerns and cars passing stopped school buses. Dr. Fisher played a video for the committee members to watch. After some discussion, it was decided to have David Pless do a short presentation at tonight's board meeting highlighting the importance of paying attention at school bus stops. Mr. Blanton asked about the cameras at the entrance of our elementary schools. Dr. Fisher stated that the process is underway. With no other business, the meeting was adjourned. The next safety meeting was scheduled for October 27th at 12 o'clock.
Thank you. Mr. Pless, if you'd like to give your presentation.
Dr. Fisher, Mr. Chairman, uh, the members of the board, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight about something that I'm extremely passionate about and that's safe, being safe at the bus stop. And you notice I put in the presentation the hashtag team CCS because I know that being safe at the bus stop is, uh, something that we need everyone's involvement in from transportation, students, our bus drivers, to also our community. Just some data for you that I wanted to share. We've got a hundred and sixty-five buses that run every day. And we average about 25 stops per route and that's twice a day. So we're talking about eight thousand two hundred and fifty stops per day. And that's 1.5 million stops per year that we make. I thought this was interesting to share from the U.S. National Highway Traffic, Traffic Safety Administration. Students are about 70 times more likely to get to school safely when taking a school bus instead of traveling by car. And one of the things that I know that the, the biggest risk for kids when riding a school bus is not while they're on it, it's while they're getting on and off. So what do we do to be safe? Well, number one, we got the best bus drivers in the state. Another thing, I want to talk to you about the training that our bus drivers get with the DMV. Our trainer is Ross McClellan, been doing it for a long time, been here with us for over five years. And he get, he does three days of training in class and then three days behind the wheel training. And Ross is an excellent teacher and really does a good job getting our bus drivers ready. Our bus drivers also get training with the bus administrators each year and also with me each year. We talk about a variety of safety topics. Mainly, we go over bus stop safety tremendously. One thing that we do with our students that I feel is very important is one time each semester, we do training with our students on bus safety to, and not just our students that ride the bus. Students that, uh, all students, whether you ride a yellow bus every day or not, we do it with all of them. We talk about the safety factors of getting on and off the bus. We show them videos that DPI produces. And also in our high schools, we've shown videos like I'm going to show you tonight to, you know, sometimes, you know, we think things just don't happen here or things are not going to happen to me. So videos that we show are from Cleveland County and show things that could very well happen here. Our bus routing, we do everything we can to make sure that we have safe bus stops. From, uh, you know, a traffic perspective, I can tell you that I look at, at least one bus stop every day. So, and one of the things that I've always done is try to go out if there's any type of question and see it for myself. So, um, another thing that we try to do is we try to make as many right-hand pickups drop-offs as we can. When I say right side, I mean where a student doesn't have to cross the road. But we do have plenty of stops where kids do cross the road. Okay? I wanted to mention our partnerships with law enforcement. Our SROs do a tremendous job of helping us to be safe, looking at things with me. If there's an issue where there's a problem where our bus has to turn around, our SROs are great to go out and check that. But I especially want to highlight our partnership with the highway patrol. Anytime I have any issue whatsoever, all it takes is a phone call or a text message to the highway patrol and they're at the bus garage just as quick as they can get there. I mentioned that to say, we use, we have a hundred and eighteen out of a hundred and sixty-five school buses that have stop arm cameras. What a stop arm camera is, is three exterior cameras on the outside of the bus that catch people when they pass, when they pass us. All hundred and sixty-five of our buses have at least five cameras, but these a hundred and eighteen have eight. Is able to get a picture of the person, is able to get a picture of the tag. And that's a, a tremendous amount. The state that only funds us for about three each year and that funding started about five years ago. So we are very much far ahead in having these stop arm cameras compared to surrounding counties. The only county that I know that has them on every bus is Transylvania. And they only got about 50 buses, so when we got more buses than that, it burns. So what can the community do to help? Watch for kids. I mean, this is a, this is a community issue where we all need to be involved. People need to pay attention to the lights on the bus. If you see amber lights flashing, amber, yellow lights, that means the bus is going to stop in the next 300 feet. Okay? And then of course, when you see red, that means stop. And obey traffic laws and all of us have seen the North Carolina bus stop law many times. On a two-lane road, all traffic, number one is a two-lane road, all traffic has to stop. Number two, a two-lane road with a center turning lane. A good example of this is, um, Highway 10 in Kager, right at the fire department. We make a stop right next to the fire department and there is a, uh, it's a three-lane with the turning lane. You have to stop in both directions there. Number three, a four-lane road without a median. A good example of that is Grover Street in Shelby, right there at Austin Bridges Barbecue. If we're stopping on the right side there, traffic has to stop going in both ways. Number four, divided highway of four lanes or more with a median separation. So a median, Highway 74, there's a median in, in, in the middle of 74. And then a road of four lanes or more with a center turning lane. Good example of that would be North Post Road at the Community College in Shelby Intermediate. You do not have to stop there because there's four more lanes with the turning lane. But I want to emphasize with number one and number two, I mean, those are good common sense that you need to stop. In three, four, and five, it is against the law. I want to point that out. However, we are not going to make a bus stop where a kid has to walk across four or five lanes of traffic. So that, that, it, it's against the law, however, that is not something that, that we're ever going to do. Okay? I want to, uh, before I show you a video, uh, is there any questions that you guys, anything you'd like to ask?
I would just like to commend you for recognizing that lots of amber and not yellow. I'm, I'm impressed.
Yes, sir.
Just make sure you tell the police and tell them to arrest that person that passed that stopped school bus. Because what I seen, what you're fixing to show right here on another one, it would have knocked a kid to the court square if that car had hit that child that was standing in front of that bus. That they'd have him up, up there on that road. When was that, last week, uh, or week before last? I, I hope our police, uh, goes, carries them to jail or tell, put them in front of that bus and say, hey, you got to walk right now and let me come and drive through that bus.
Well, I can tell you that, uh, the highway patrol is completely on our side. There has never been one time where I made a phone call, sent them a video or a text message that they didn't go and write a ticket. So they are, uh, just a tremendous partner with us. So this video here, uh, you guys can go ahead and play that. So I want to show you, this is two, this is two consecutive stops. And I want to point out the first stop where our drug driver, the students and the community do exactly what we're supposed to do. So you can see, you can see our driver. She's about to do her hand signals, our, the traffic has stopped. Students stop and pay attention. I mean, just like clockwork, that's exactly how it's supposed to work. All right? So our very, our very next stop, our bus driver does exactly what she's supposed to do. Our students do what they're supposed to do and the vehicle doesn't do what they're supposed to do. So, so in my opinion, our bus driver right there, did she save those kids life? Yeah, probably. And I commend the kids also for paying attention, doing what they're supposed, doing what they're supposed to do.
So do the kids wait for a hand signal from the driver before they'll cross?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Interesting. Any other questions for Mr. Pless?
I got to tell that one about the one that come around from the rear. He had one, he showed us, there's a car past school bus from behind. And the kid was already in front. And what if that bus driver hadn't seen that truck that shot around that school bus like that? And I'm telling you, that's the one I was talking about. It would, I'm, it was a flying. It would, it, it would have been a, it would have been a bad day.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is our COVID update. Dr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Called a lot of grief since, uh, last month about the length of my presentation. Both from, uh, well, I'll just say.
Hopefully you took it to heart.
From lots of folks. So I'm, I'm going to be brief tonight. Uh, I've got a few updates and I'm not going to go through a lot of these, uh, because some of these updates are the same that you, uh, were presented with last month. The, the first bullet I would like to draw your attention to is just a reminder that the 21, 22 COVID plans and presentations are on our website. You go to the main screen of our website, click on COVID update. Uh, all of these presentations from August and September are on our board, uh, on our website. Tonight's presentation will be on our website again, just to reiterate the plans that we have in terms of students, uh, teachers and staff, quarantine tracing, uh, and so that full first bullet is new. Uh, again, uh, some general updates from, uh, last month that we continue to emphasize and these, these, these updates are continuing to be part of our plan. It really hasn't changed as we are moving through, uh, with, with this first nine weeks of school. It's hard to believe that end of this month, the first nine weeks will be over. I think the, uh, the nine weekends, uh, Oc- uh, Friday, the 22nd, I believe. Again, uh, areas of emphasis that we've talked about, uh, proper mask wearing in terms of quarantines, when students should stay home, uh, if they are symptomatic. The new slide that I, with two new slides I'd like to present to you tonight. Uh, this is a graph of active COVID positives. Again, though, this is a daily count of, of active positives. This data, and you'll see in just a minute, is not taken every day. It's taken twice a week. It's usually on Mondays and Fridays. Uh, this is from their health department data and these are active cases. So the number of positives that we actively have, you can see as we begin school, uh, we had a, uh, an increase there. We got to about mid-September and we've seen a steady decrease. Uh, I'll give you some data. The last data point that we have is Friday, October 8th. At the end of this, I'll give you an update from today that will continue. If I plot, plot today's, uh, plot on that, you would continue to see a trajectory in a grid direction. So this is a positive, uh, in terms of active, uh, a positive thing and active positives that we have, uh, in our district. Uh, these are active contacts. And so if you notice, and I send you these regularly, uh, there's a chart and, and the number of active positives and, and active contacts. And we talked a good bit about this, uh, in October. You know, kids roll on and off that and those are just the daily active. And again, you can see the number of active contacts are going down, um, and are under 300 at this point. The next slide shows that data. And again, these are the dates those are collected on. You can see as we begin September, we saw, uh, an uptick and a spike there in the number of positives. For a while there, we get to mid-September, we stayed flat for a while. And now as, as September's ended and October's gotten here, we have seen a, a decrease in both our current active positives and active contacts. This is not, make sure, you know, I want to be clear, this is not a cumulative total. This is the number of active positives they have on that day. Each school has a quarantine and a COVID tracker that our school nurse and our health tech works, health department, Heather Vols does a tremendous amount of work, goes through there and, and tracks the number of active positives we have in our schools. And you can see that number going down. The data from today, October 11th, if I'd added that, got that right before we started our meeting, the active positives are 69 and the active, uh, contacts are 185. So we do have, uh, continue to see positive trend. We hope and pray that that number continues to push down. Uh, we're continuing to monitor that. We're continuing to do those things that we're doing in our schools, uh, that we listed in the first couple of slides that I didn't go over, uh, but to hopefully to continue to do those things, to continue to drive those number of positives down, those number of contacts, that way we see, uh, students in school, we don't have, uh, positive quarantines. I, I believe that, uh, this is an example of, of, uh, a really good example of what we're doing is working and what we're doing is, is making a difference in our schools. Uh, Mr. Queen started the meeting applauding the work of our administrators and I would, I would concur with that along with all of our other staff, our teachers, our assistants, our custodians, child nutrition, uh, maintenance, all of our folks, everybody really working together, our bus drivers to really make this happen. Uh, it just doesn't go down by accident. It goes, it's a lot of hard work and attention to detail to make our numbers push the way they are. So obviously in our county is trending in a good direction. Uh, we've had a lot of positive, uh, uh, information from our county COVID, uh, numbers. So that's a really good thing and hopefully that our, our community is, is getting healthier and we're able to, uh, to return to many of the things that we, um, enjoy doing. So, Mr. Chairman, at this time I'm not going to take any questions. I just remind you that there is some required action through Senate Bill 659.
Any questions for Dr. Fisher? Mr. Blanton?
I went to county commissioner meeting Tuesday and Mr. Epley, he made a report that it was as a county as a whole, it was decreasing, uh, considerably for what it had in the past. He made that announcement, uh, Tuesday, Tuesday night at the commissioner meeting.
Any other questions? And yes, according to Senate Bill 654, we need a motion to keep doing what we're doing or a motion to change something.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we leave the mask policy as is.
Motion by Mr. Humphries, second by Mr. Taylor. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Blanton?
I'll still leave it as people's choice. 100%.
Any other questions or discussion? Those in favor of keeping our COVID and mask policies the same? If you'd raise your hand? Any opposed? Motion carries eight to one. Thank you, Dr. Fisher. Next is, uh, student transfer request. You've got those in your board docs. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Mr. Hunt, second by Mr. Glover. Those in favor of the student transfer request, if you'd raise your hand? And that carries nine.
I can't get it to pull up. It too good to pull up.
Next is, uh, board member comments.
How many were?
Mr. Fitch, do you have anything? Mr. Hunt? Mr. Glover? Mr. Humphries? Mr. Shulley? Mr. Blanton?
Yes.
Okay.
Friday during our, uh, before our operations meeting, I had a company to come, uh, that our solution to come and give us a demonstration of those attachments that you put onto our conditions. And, uh, is it a fix? No. Will it help? Yes. And it could be inexpensive. So that might be something that we want to address, even though we get the new unions to are putting something like this on. Look at other companies and make sure that we're looking at the best company or whatever, or put it. or put it out for bids. But I appreciated that company coming in that, that I asked to come, and they came and gave us about a 15-minute, and showed us several different ones for different, different sizes, window units, and people got them in their houses, their workplaces, hospitals, they've got them everywhere. So I've called and done some checking, and is it going to fix it? No. But will it help? Yes. And I think we, any solution that we could do to help matters, we should work toward doing that, because it said COVID, flus, mold, and everything. In other words, those, those things will help all the way across the board. And I want to let our staff know, noticed they talked about benefits. Well, I haven't forgot about our life, that life insurance, and our dental insurance, and our vision insurance. I still want to get it out there and get it out there for bids for somebody else to, to where that when a person retires, quits, resigns, leaves us or whatever, they can carry their insurance with them at the group rate. And that is not costing the county not one red cent, not one dime. So I am back on that, that, that we need to address that as, as this board. We need to address it because it's not costing us anything, and it's a benefit for our employees. I can't understand why we wouldn't look at that. I just cannot understand why do you want to put something off for two or three years? Well, people dying like flies, been dying like flies. What if they'd had the insurance? They might have helped been able to take care, you know, if it was, and they have been employees of ours. So anything that we can offer to help an employee, I feel like we ought to do it, especially when it's not costing us nothing. And are we, well, I don't guess, I can't ask the question. This here is just my, my, my talking. I've got my insurance, I've got my air solution. I hope our nurses and stuff are doing a good check to keep our numbers coming down on, on that right there, and I guess I'm done.
Ms. Green? Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I would like to, I'd like to call attention to Mr. Chairman's good-looking shirt he's got on. Would you mind, would you mind elaborating on why you get the privilege to wear that Shelby High School?
I was going to go over that.
Okay, great.
That's why I left you for next to last. If you can't tell by the shirt I'm wearing, I did lose a bit. It was after our July or August board meeting, Mr. Taylor and I were having a discussion of football prospects for this year, and a little difference of opinion of where we might stand at the end of the year. So I threw down the bet that the loser would have to wear the winner's shirt after the Crest Shelby game. So congratulations to Mr. Allen and Coach Will Banks and the Shelby High School football team. I will put a word in for my Chargers. They didn't roll over at halftime. They sure had every reason to, but they put up a good fight. And it was a good night for football in Cleveland County. Kings Mountain won, Burns won, and Shelby and Crest played a good game, and good sportsmanship during the game and after. So it was a good night in Cleveland County. But I hope this is the last time I have to wear it. I have tried to get Greg to commit to a standing bed over the next three years, but he hasn't been yet, so we'll, we'll see.
Would, would you allow me to say something else? It's, it's about our band and our cheerleaders and our, and our football.
If you can do it in about 30 seconds, so we can keep on with-
I had a, a parent to call me, and they didn't have but $190, and they owed $340 on their cheering uniform or their band uniform, so I'm, I'm going to say both so that it wouldn't call out nobody. And as a faculty member, made a statement that we have to pay, put the money to the football players. Well, there's many parents goes there and watch that cheerleader and those band people. And I feel like it ought to, we ought to try to equalize out. And if a parent is that broke and that child made it, and I don't know who that parent was, somebody else called me, she owed $340, and she didn't have but $190, and she was going to lose her seat off the cheerleading or the band. I, I need to say it both ways, so that, I wish that person would call me personally, and that was somebody make a donation to help do that. But I think we need, as athletic, I done went over the 30 seconds, the athletic department to recognize our band and our cheerleaders, that they're just as important as that football
Next, we have a closed session. Mr. Shorty, do you have a motion to enter into closed session?
Pursuant to General Statute 143-318.111A3, I make a motion to go into closed session with our attorney to get a legal update on the matter.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor.
Do we say the name of the matter? I do not have the matter in front of me. I will amend that motion to include Roberts versus-
We'll consider that a friendly amendment.
Okay, yeah, I didn't have it in front of me.
Can you second it? Okay, all right. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? It carries nine zero.